Sorry about that. Well, let's go back to opening statements and we'll stay in this race again for the unexpired two-year term and we'll let Philip Throne introduce himself for 60 seconds.
My name is Philip Throne. I'm a local business owner, a Navy veteran, a veteran of the Johnson County Sheriff's Department. My wife and I have been living in Spring Hill now for nine years, or working on our ninth year. I have four children ranging from 19 to five years old. As I said before, I'm a local business owner. Spring Hill opened their arms to us and just completely made my dreams come true after serving in the Navy, serving with the Johnson County Sheriff's Office, being able to serve the community has become my next passion. Spring Hill has grown in incredible ways over my nine years here. I can only imagine some of the people that I've met working as a local barber that have been here for 20, 30 years and the changes they've seen. I'd like to continue to learn to serve this community and to be here to guide us through this unprecedented growth that we're experiencing.
Let's go down to the other end of the table and move into the race again, that is, for two at-large seats for four-year terms and we'll let Stephen introduce himself for 60 seconds.
I'm Stephen Boswell. I have been a citizen of Spring Hill for 10 years. My daughter actually goes to this specific school now. Been interested in the direction of Spring Hill ever since we got here. We love this town and we want to see it grow in a healthy, in good manner that continues to show the values that we found so attractive to this city when we first moved in.
Staying in this race, Ivan Delgado will give you a chance to introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank The Post for allowing me to come up here and thank everybody for coming out here. My name's Ivan Delgado. I'm a proud husband, father, an Army veteran, and a former Spring Hill police officer running for city council here. My wife is a teacher here at the high school in Spring Hill. We moved here a little over five years ago and we have a beautiful three-year-old daughter. We absolutely love our community and we want to, I want to make sure that that community is going in the right direction. My years in public safety and community involvement have taught me to listen, solve problems, build trust, and I believe that many in our community have lost trust in our elected officials from the last race that we had here and I'm running to restore that. I'm running to bring new businesses, improve our roads, and lower the mill levy responsibly while keeping Spring Hill values strong. I'm committed to transparency, practical solutions, and serving every resident and I'd be honored to have your vote on November 4th.
And move the microphone over to Brian so Brian can introduce himself. Brian Peel, your introductory statement.
Hello. My name is Brian Peel. I've been a resident of Spring Hill since 2016. We, I moved here to become the director for the Spring Hill Recreation Commission. I started attending city council and school board meetings in 2017 because it was beneficial to me to learn about the community and help me with my work. And I found myself leaving some of those meetings feeling very frustrated with what I saw and heard. So that is what inspired me to run four years ago and I feel like we've been able to accomplish a lot of really good things. We've made some really, really great strides and progress in growing our town and developing our town in the ways that we have struggled to develop in the past and I want to continue that work. So that is why I'm here.
Thank you all. It's going to feel redundant in the room but we were experiencing some technical difficulties. So Rodolfo, I'm going to give you a chance to give your opening statement again. It's going to, in essence, be your third opening statement of the night because you did the mayoral race too. But just for, you know, for fairness for the video as it lives online after tonight, people in the room might hear it again but it might be the only time they see it on the video. So I give you a chance to give your opening statement again for 60 seconds.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned before, I've been in Spring Hill for 11 years. Have done a lot of volunteer activity in the past and in the, in Spring Hill and in Olathe just because that's my nature is to be engaged in the community. I have assisted with development of city strategic plans in the state of Washington. I have been set priorities for the city of Spokane and its workforce development activities. I believe that my background and experience will allow me to address issues, concerns of the citizens. I have 42 years as an administrator, community advocate, retired university president. I'm very aware of the, and understand governmental organizations.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you for humoring me. Thank you for the audience for kind of being patient with our technical difficulties. It sounds like everything is good to go now so we'll jump into some other questions and some issues. Again, to reiterate, all the gentlemen up here are running for city council. There are three at-large seats up for grabs here, two for four-year terms and one for an unexpired two-year term. I'll also note there are two candidates not here, Michael Grant who's currently a city council member and then James Savage as well. Did not hear from either one of them about how, why they would not be here but just wanted to say they'll also be on the ballot as well. Okay, so the order goes to Philip first and then we'll jump back to the other side of the table. So what's the biggest priority for you? What's the thing that you want to tackle most if elected to city council? What do you think is Spring Hill's biggest challenger priority? And we'll give 90 seconds for this just to give you a chance to maybe expound on some of your campaign priorities. Philip, we'll start with you.
I appreciate that. So our biggest priority, my biggest priority moving forward will kind of continue the work that the current city council has been putting in. One, everybody knows that taxes are one of the biggest issues that our city deals with. We feel it at every level of the economic rung. We've got lots of people here that would love nothing more than to grow old here, raise their families here, retire here, and live a long, happy, quiet, safe life. So moving forward, as we experience the growth that we've been experiencing, it's encouraging those new businesses come in, the right partners that create jobs, that provide us with that commercial offset to allow us to continue bringing down the mill levy for the residential client, our residential taxes and allowing people to, to continue to be safe and comfortable. So as we move forward, it's really going to be a big focus on encouraging those, those businesses to come in and create those jobs. Everybody wants restaurants. Everybody wants beautiful asphalt roads. So the quickest way to accomplish that is to allow the right, the right businesses to come in. The quicker we get residential taxes down and commercial taxes up is the quicker we accomplish all of those goals.
Going down to the other side of the table, Stephen, your 90 seconds on what you see is the biggest challenger priority facing Spring Hill and how you would tackle it if elected to the city council?
One of the biggest things that I've noticed in the last four years unfortunately is the trust of the city council has dropped substantially with all of the issues that have happened with elections and so forth. And with that trust that has dropped, we also have started seeing more of people second guessing, looking at their taxes, and wondering what's really going on. Transparency to me is a very big issue with everything going on in the city. Also followed with a way to make sure that the citizens' burden is lowered tax-wise and that we can get more businesses in here that actually have jobs available for the citizens that are in this town so that we can start building from there to add restaurants on top of that. And also continuing with housing but also affordable housing as well. Another thing that is important to me is to make sure that the citizen's voice is heard and that they have somebody fighting for them on the council for what they feel is important as well. A lot of that comes down to the citizen participation time and we need to pay more attention to our citizens. I've seen so many times where we see so many people come up and participate in their concerns and they-
You can finish the thought. Yeah, finish the thought, finish the sentence.
And they feel like their voices go unheard.
Moving the microphone over to Ivan. Ivan, what do you see as the biggest priority or challenge facing Spring Hill and how you would tackle it if elected?
So my big, one of my biggest priorities is getting new businesses here. I grew up in a big city up in Massachusetts where we didn't really have too many things going on. And I remember as a kid, either you were hanging out at home or you, you were going out and doing something stupid and you got yourself in trouble. So I really want to get some businesses out here so there's more things for the kids to do and then also more things for families to do out here. Getting more businesses here is also going to increase the amount of taxes that we get which is going to help us lower the mill levy a little bit more and create some tax relief for the citizens here. Obviously, the roads, the current city council is definitely doing a decent job at getting the roads done but we need to keep going on that, focus on the roads that are really, really bad, and go on from there.
Moving the microphone over to Brian Peel, your biggest priorities or the challenges you see facing Spring Hill and how you would tackle it if, in your case, reelected?
I think our biggest challenges that we face right now are infrastructure and utility, either improvements or new builds that are either currently underway or will be going underway in the next four years. That includes roads, that includes sewer, that includes parks and trails. All of these things have been challenges for us in the past and continue to be challenges and we're going to face more challenges with them. So I think this is the biggest priority for the council moving forward. My second priority is a quality work environment for the staff of the city. We've made major strides in improving that in the last four years and it's one of the things I'm most proud of. So I think we need to continue fostering a quality work environment for the staff and the governing body. Business development is crucial for us. We need more businesses so that we can continue to lower the mill levy, that we can drive the tax burden down on some of our citizens. We know that it's more than what our citizens want. We know that that needs to be a major priority for us. Financial efficiency and the mill levy kind of go hand in hand. I feel like right now we get a lot more work done with the dollars that we have in comparison to the past before some of us were on the council. So I feel like that's some really quality work that we have done.
And rounding out this question back to Rodolfo Arrivalo, the biggest challenge or priority you see facing Spring Hill and how you would tackle it if elected to city council?
Two key priorities and that's based on what citizens have communicated to me. One of them is the issue of economic development that people have. As I mentioned earlier, I would create a task force or a council on economic development. It would focus on developing marketing information about the city for potential new businesses, entrepreneurs. The fact is that they would include data about the growth of the city and business opportunities for investors. I would also establish a funding initiative that would assist local and small businesses currently in Spring Hill to help them improve either the storefront landscaping, marketing, so that could also grow. It's not just bringing future businesses but how do you support the current businesses in, in Spring Hill. The other that I would do is I would immediately ask for a budget, a forensic study of the city budget to make sure that strategic priorities of the city are guiding the expenditures of the city. I would consider the implementation of a zero-based budgeting system to ensure expenditure are effectively utilized in the city and use economic development growth by diversifying city revenues for supporting the expenditures and needs of the city.
Well, several of you mentioned the fact that Spring Hill is growing. You have to contend with that. In some instance, I mean, on one hand, it's a good thing that you're, you have more residents means more homeowners, a larger tax base, more economic activity. Spring Hill is one of the fastest-growing cities in Johnson County. Its population up more than 25% over the past four years according to the U.S. Census. Of course, such rapid growth can also strain the city's current infrastructure and services. So what does sustainable growth look like to you and what would you, what policies would you advocate for when it comes to growth? And the order falls to Stephen Boswell to start this question. And we gave you 90 seconds on the last one but we want to hustle through some issues so we'll give you 60 seconds for the rest of these. So what does sustainable growth look like to you in Spring Hill, Stephen Boswell?
Sustainable growth looks like balance between citizens and businesses to keep the burden off the citizens and to allow us to address the sewers, to address the police department, the growing police department as we need, as we grow bigger as a city. I am definitely a proponent for looking for a newer facility for the police department to get into because they're currently in the old postal station and it's getting a little tight there and I think we definitely need to look at that. But a way to make sure that we are able to continue with the growth without raising the mill levy as well.
Ivan Delgado, what does sustainable growth look like to you in, in what has been a rapidly growing era for Spring Hill?
So we're definitely growing very quickly here in Spring Hill and we need to make sure that we're supporting that growth and not neglecting the things within the city that are very important for the city to, to be operating. That, one of those things from my prior background is LEO, making sure that we have enough officers for the road. I know that when I was in and I think is still the case now, we just didn't have enough officers because things happen, people get sick, people have babies, things like that. We need to be able to maintain the roads that are out there. Yes, we're building new roads, we're building new houses but we can't forget about the old roads. You know, can't tell you how many times I've driven here downtown and hit a major pothole that I'm like, man, hey, this road needs to be taken care of. So we need to make sure that we're paying attention to all the things within the city, so.
Brian Peel, what does sustainable growth look like in Spring Hill to you and how would you approach that if reelected?
I feel like sustainable growth starts with a variety of residential options and choices that residents can have. We have a very wide variety of residents that have a wide variety of economic situations, a wide variety of ages, and a wide variety of family makeups. And they all require different options to be able to find affordable places to live. So I think that is a high, high priority. We need more businesses that can be economic drivers for us and really help us lower the burden of the mill levy. It also includes steady and incremental decreasing of the mill levy. It's probably going to be a small year-by-year approach and that's the approach we've taken in the past four years and I think we will continue that approach. We've had disagreements and discussions about how far we can push that and those have turned out positive solutions, I think.
Question to Rodolfo Arrivalo, what does sustainable growth look like in Spring Hill? How would you advocate for, for policies, policies that you think support a sustainable growth if elected to the city council?
Well, I'm, for the most part, a planner. And as a planner, I think that we, we need to begin to take a better look at how we create a strategic direction and a strategic plan for the city of Spring Hill which it does not have. Along with that is a comprehensive plan for, for growth which I'm currently working on as part of the planning commission. Once we identify where we want growth and what type of growth to occur in the city, then we'll have a better idea of how we spend and utilize our resources. And that's key to making sure that there's objectives that we're trying to achieve and it gets the city to where it wants to get to.
Philip Throne, what does sustainable growth look like in Spring Hill to you and what policies would you advocate for to achieve that if elected, or reelected?
So sustainable growth to me means investing in our future. Brian brought up a great point. We have a, we have a very narrow availability for residential options right now. It is very hard to encourage new businesses to come into our city when they don't have a hirable work base living in the city. So making sure that we're setting up multifamily units in the town, encouraging developers to come in and continue with options like apartments, townhomes, single-family units like we have going on at Wiswol Farms right now. That's a good way to invest in our, in our future to allow those businesses as they come in somewhere to house the people that we hope will work there. I'd also like to take a minute to acknowledge that sustainable growth doesn't mean giving free money to businesses. I don't think that would be a financially responsible thing. Rodolfo mentioned financial incentives for business owners and property owners to invest back in the city and I, I don't think that that's a responsible direction to go as the city, especially with our tax issues that we have now.
Now, just give Rodolfo maybe 30 seconds to respond to that exact point about financial incentives and whether the wisdom of that-
You misinterpreted what I said. What I said is in order to promote more business in the city, I would look at developing a program for existing small businesses in Spring Hill so that they could bring in more revenue and therefore resulting in more sales tax for the city which then would pay for the program that I'm suggesting.
Order falls to Ivan Delgado for this next question, so we'll start there, 60 seconds. I think not all of you, most of you have mentioned property taxes and how that is top of mind for a lot of residents. Of course, not only in Spring Hill, across Johnson County. Just for some context, earlier this month, the city council approved next year's budget, lowers the mill rate by .75 mils. That means a roughly $34 reduction in what the average spring homeowner will pay the city next year. Again, this is just the city's portion of your tax bill. The city offset the cost of lowering tax revenues next year by moving some reserve funds into the general fund. So there's a lot of factors here, right? You're thinking about lowering tax rates. You're also thinking about keeping the reserves as, as full as possible and also thinking about spending. And so where do you fall on that, on that spectrum as you try to balance those competing needs? Is the city's current tax rate appropriate and would you want to see it go down? And if you want to lower it further, where would the offsets come from in your mind? Ivan Delgado, 60 seconds.
So, you know, like I was talking earlier in the mayor, right in mayor forum, I would like to see the mill levy go down an extra percent, 1%, except, not the .75 that it went down. And I think that we'd be able to accomplish that by bringing new businesses here in the city. Getting, I think, the water, wastewater project that we're doing is going to be something great. That's going to allow new businesses to come in. It's going to create more sewer revenue. I don't know if that's, that's what it's called or not, but it's going to bring more businesses in and that's going to lower the, it's going to increase the taxes and help lower the property tax, the taxes for everybody.
And so the plan being sounds like cutting the property taxes but not necessarily under your vision, envisioning any kind of budget cuts or any, any sort of spending cuts?
Well, I definitely want to take a look at the budget because I assume that the city does have some things that we're wasting money on that we could possibly afford to cut.
Brian Peel, the question about taxes, do you want to see them lowered more? If so, what are the offsets? Do you look at spending cuts in the budget? Do you look at maybe dipping into the reserves even more? How do you kind of balance those competing needs?
So I think my approach with the budget and the mill levy is always going to be balanced. We've mentioned a lot of the needs that we already have talked about tonight and we need to fund a lot of those. I think we can find ways to continue funding a lot of our needs and also continue to incrementally lower the mill levy and give taxpayers a little bit of relief. I also think it's incredibly important to fund our CIP list. We really struggled prior to four years to be able to fund anything on our CIP list and I feel-
Capital improvements, yes.
Yes. And we've done a very good job at starting to scratch some of those items off the list which is vitally important for us to grow and, and do all the things that we're talking about tonight. It also includes funding staff. Quality staff are expensive because they have high-quality talents and skills. And we need to hire them, retain them, and give them all the tools that they need for them to be successful as staff members.
And would you ever see the need to, to cut spending? Would you ever see any need to find areas of the budget that could be trimmed if you want to, again, think about cutting the mill levy even more?
We will always have options to be able to cut things. I think it's more about prioritization. We will always be able to find areas where we can say this thing is more important than the other. I don't anticipate with our growth us needing to, or needing to make major cuts of things because with the number of homes that we add and hopefully businesses in the future, it drives our total tax revenue up.
Rodolfo, the question to you about kind of wanting to see property tax rates lowered in Spring Hill but at the same time thinking about reserves, thinking about the budget and what needs to be paid for. How do you balance that equation in your mind?
Well, I think you balance it by having a diverse revenue sources for the city. It's clear that a number of sales taxes and, and other taxes that the city receives are continuing to grow because of growth of, of residential locations. But we can't continue to put the, the needs of the city on the backs of solely the residents. I think that's why we need to expand community, commercial entities here in the city. It's why we need to effectively market the city. People seem to think that because we're here somehow, somebody's going to say, oh, I think I'm going to go to Spring Hill and build a restaurant or whatever. You have to tell people you're around. And so far, we haven't done a lot of that.
And the same follow-up question that I asked Ivan and Brian, but do you see any need for looking at the budget more closely? I mean, you did, in a previous answer, said you would look at zero-based budgeting which is basically starting at zero every year but are there parts of the budget you would want to see trimmed or target?
Probably. I mean, in this year's budget, I, I noticed that one particular department had a 42% or a 34% increase in their salary base. Nobody really ever explained why. So I would look at things like that. That's what a forensic review of your budget would do for you is to get a better idea why resources are going. Governments are used to simply increasing on an annual basis a budget rather than assessing why the increase is needed.
Philip Throne, another question about taxes. We've heard people wanting to lower the mill rate even more than what it's going to next year but also keeping in mind the city's reserves, the spending, wanting the services that residents want. So where do you come out when you're thinking about those competing interests?
So I was part of the council during this last budget meeting. We obviously brought the mill levy down. Chad and I, Chad Young and I both voted no for the point, 7, .75 reduction. Our goal was the full mill reduction on our budget. That will continue to be a priority moving forward. Also on that, during that same meeting, we also had a, a change in the way we administer our IT for the city as a whole and that resulted in a significant savings for us. So we are currently evaluating on a regular basis the services that we have in the city, the services that we provide to our citizens and we're constantly looking for opportunities to bring the budget down as far as operating costs go. So for me, that's the, that's, that's kind of been part and parcel for the last four years. Everybody's generally understanding that things are getting a little out of control and we're coming through and being responsible about bringing it down in a, in a way that doesn't reduce the services or our ability to provide services to the community.
Yeah, and you advocated for an even slightly larger mill rate cut. Did you consider, were there things in the budget that might need to be trimmed or looked at more closely if you're thinking about potentially taking in some, a little bit less revenue?
So our, my biggest focus on that was we've simply had gangbuster growth years. So we have an opportunity before changes come down the state as far as valuations go. It was an opportunity to, to provide some of those, those, excuse me, those, those extra dollars that we found in the surplus back to the community as kind of a thank you for supporting us as we've been managing our growth.
And finally, wrapping up this question, Stephen Boswell, back at the other end of the table, the idea of hearing from residents that they want even larger mill rate cuts than what the city has been providing even though it's been, you know, pretty steady, if incremental over the last few years but also balancing the needs of cash reserves and, and the spending and what needs to be paid for in city services. So how does that play out in your mind? What would you prioritize? What's the balance?
I think a lot of it can be looked at as far as the city goes is to give fair pay raises as, as it goes across the board first off and to have that forensic accountant come in and look and give us a baseline to start with so we know where we're at. And then from there, we need to build off of that. And there are plenty of state subsidy programs and federal subsidy programs for roads and infrastructure that we can use. And we need to have somebody that is able to get in there, utilize it, and get those grants going for us because it's a long process and it's required, there's a lot of steps required to get those but I think we've missed out on quite a few of those in the past and we could definitely use those to help us to cut our budgets down.
And the final follow-up question that I've asked the other gentleman, but do you see areas that would be, I guess, ripe for cutting or things that you would look at more closely in the budget that you would, you would want to try to trim?
I would make sure, I would just want to make sure that our city staff, that all of it, all of our city staff is, is being utilized to their full potential and- is being utilized to their full potential and make sure that we continue on that path and so that we don't, we aren't having too many people doing the same job or missing out on other spots.
Another question or issue that has come up along with growth is just the city's infrastructure, needing to support that. A couple of you have mentioned the capital improvements plan that also passed with the budget. And also just transparency in terms of this event. Been going close to 40 minutes, so I anticipate maybe two, maybe three more questions, especially we also have a school board forum after this. The order goes to Brian Peel for the start of this question. What do you think are the biggest infrastructure needs for the city and what should be prioritized in coming years? So, the biggest infrastructure needs and how you would approach it. 60 seconds for Brian Peel.
So, our biggest infrastructure needs are streets and roads. When I started, we had some roads that were in severe disrepair. We've been able to make improvements to a lot of those. We still have several more that need more improvement, some that need full rebuilds. Also, something that's new that has come up more recently is our highway access in 169 Highway. We were able to get funding and greenlight a project for a stoplight at the 191st intersection that I think would have been incredibly challenging to turn around in the timeframe that we were able to turn it around. Quite frankly, it was surprising that we were able to get it greenlit so quickly. And I think that's a testament to the work that our staff has done with KDOT. But also, you know, that was something that we heard a lot about from residents about safety and we prioritized it and we found a way to fund it and we got it knocked out and it should be happening soon.
Rodolfo, what do you think are the biggest infrastructure needs for the city and what should be prioritized in coming years?
Well, I think that as Brian mentioned, probably one of them is roads, trying to make sure that we maintain and we expand the exits and entries into the city. But I think the other two items are really the renovation or the improvement of the wastewater system as well as the addition of new sewer lines because that will also obviously affect whether certain industries are able to come in or not come in or new developments get put on the docket or not. And that will be very important for us as we begin to plan the growth and direction that the city's going to grow.
Philip, the biggest infrastructure needs for Spring Hill over the next four years, what would you prioritize?
So, starting off, my biggest concern is always going to be what people need in our city. Trail connectivity, sidewalks, safe paths for our children going to and from schools. That's been an ongoing problem in Spring Hill as a whole. We've got severe connectivity issues and we've been prioritizing that just since I started in March and the City Council's been working on it for years and years. We've been making some significant headway. We've been able to move a large amount of money to continue funding that program. But I think everybody else hit the nail on the head. As we want to attract new businesses into our area, we have to be able to provide them with utilities. Wastewater and sewer connectivity is absolutely essential for that. We are currently doing the new wastewater treatment plant because we are quickly, rapidly reaching our cap on what we're able to process. So, being able to accomplish both what the people need and what the people want, that's my infrastructure plan.
Stephen Boswell, the biggest infrastructure need that you see in Spring Hill, how would you prioritize it and tackle it if elected?
My thoughts on the biggest infrastructure issues that we have in Spring Hill is the roads and the arteries in and out of our city and onto the highways. There are several federally funded programs that will allow help to make those happen much more economically for the city. But also, what that does is it allows more businesses to come in as well. And alongside those roads, you, of course, you lay your utilities along with them as you're doing the construction and that helps with the accessibility to hook up to city utilities as well. The biggest thing is that with this growth that the city is going right now, we are, I feel like we are barely managing to keep up infrastructure-wise with the growth that we have had, this explosive growth, and we need to worry about catching up with that infrastructure.
And rounding out this question, Ivan Delgado, the biggest infrastructure needs you see in Spring Hill, how you would tackle that or prioritize that if elected?
Well, I could sound like a broken record player, but roads are definitely something that need to be done. We need to get away from the chip and seal and go to actual asphalt. Nobody likes to have all those rocks from the chips and seal banging up against your car and whatnot. Sidewalks are also something that's, you know, kind of high on the priority list for me. You know, I look at the future of my daughter. She's, she has a friend that lives in another subdivision and she wants to ride her bike out there. Well, I'm not going to feel comfortable with her riding her bike on 199th. You know, I'd rather her ride her bike on a sidewalk and be able to get to the other subdivision or get to, you know, the local park that we have or whatever the case may be. And, you know, this has been an issue for quite some time with the wastewater plant. We'll give kudos to the City Council right now. We've been reaching, we've almost been reaching capacity for the last, what, three, four years and finally got the ball rolling to get some, get a new facility and hopefully become a regional provider for the Johnson County and Miami County area.
It's amazing to me, I come all the way down to Spring Hill, I still hear about chip seal. You know, I can't believe that, coming from Overland Park. We have that there, too. Well, this is a question that we'll start with Rodolfo and we'll go around. Several of you have mentioned kind of the impact and the lingering feelings from 2021 after that situation, how it hurt residents' trust in the electoral process, in city government itself. So, directly to you, how do you plan to restore residents' trust in Spring Hill government and the electoral process? How would you plan to do that if elected? 60 seconds, we'll start with Rodolfo Arivalo.
I guess I would go ahead and take a look at changing some things in terms of how the City Council functions or suggests that changes be made, especially in terms of how the City Council responds to concerns that citizens bring to their meeting. The other would be is to support the use of more social media to get back information to the citizens of Spring Hill so that they're aware of what's going on, what issues the City Council is trying to address and why and how. And once they begin to understand that, they'll get a little bit more cognizant of the direction of the city.
Philip, how would you want to continue to try to restore trust in Spring Hill governance after 2021? What's your plan? What are your priorities?
Rodolfo and I agree on this, actually. I believe that social media is sorely underutilized. Currently, we live stream only on YouTube, which is a fantastic platform and it makes our archiving our videos very, very easy. Live streaming on Facebook is as easy as putting a phone on a tripod and hitting stream. There are multiple platforms that we could absolutely become more active in. I think making sure that we are as accessible as possible is a, it's a promise fulfilled always and it should be our top priority. As far as confidence, the mayoral race definitely hit people very, very hard. The race four years ago was an absolute debacle this year. Thankfully, we had enough time to get ahead of it. And I feel that the changes that were made to our city ordinances and the way we set up these succession planning was very, very appropriate. So, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to dealing with vacated seats, I believe leaning on the law and the ordinances as they are set and not trying to reinvent the wheel every moment, that's how you instill confidence in people.
Stephen Boswell, how do you re-instill confidence and trust in city governance after 2021? What would be your approach?
The council needs to listen to the citizens, especially to participation. They need to acknowledge what the citizens' concerns are and they need to be transparent with everything the council is doing at this point. I think a good beginning point, as Rodolfo was suggesting, is the forensic audit. We start there and we start building trust from there. And as we continue building that trust, the citizens' participation will be more valuable as far as for input towards the city and the direction that we head.
Ivan Delgado, your response to this question, what would you do to try to continue to build or restore trust in city governance?
I think that all starts with honesty with the citizens. I know after 2021, everybody was very hurt at the things that perspired here in our town. You know, we're kind of in a similar situation, a little bit different, you know, but if I get on council, I think what they should have done in 2021 was whoever got the most votes should have been appointed onto City Council. That way, everybody feels like, hey, my vote counted. Instead, you know, we put people on there that didn't have any votes or anything like that. I think that we need to utilize social media a lot better than where we are. Something as simple as like, hey, I know we haven't bought a new dump truck, but hey, we bought a six-yard dump truck. Let's post it on social media so that way, people can look at it and see and be like, hey, this is what my tax dollars are going for. This is what my tax dollars went.
And rounding out this question, Brian Peel, how would you work to continue to try to build and restore trust in city governance in City Hall?
A couple of the items that have already been mentioned, better use of socials, full support of that. Citizen participation is not very user-friendly for citizens right now. We need to find ways to improve that and get better interaction with citizens at a meeting or in another platform or format. I think the best way to build the trust with the people is through interactions and relationship building. You got to get out there and talk to people. You got to be at community events. You got to see the people and that is the best way to get their feedback, to understand what their problems are and what their issues are. Talking to people face-to-face is incredibly valuable. I try to do the majority of my communication in face-to-face. I have a bad habit of not scheduling meetings with people and just doing it drop-in style because I prefer to talk to people face-to-face. So, that is my best methodology for rebuilding and providing trust along with making quality decisions. And I feel like we've got a pretty good track record of that over the last four years.
So, this will be the final question and the order falls to Philip, so he'll start and then we'll go back around to the other side of the table and come back down to hear a final thought from all of you. But some readers have asked us, not only in this city but in other cities as well, just to explain what your qualifications are for the job and what distinguishes you for the role that you're seeking. So, qualifications and what distinguishes you from the other candidates. We'll give each of you 60 seconds to respond to that as a sort of closing statement, starting with Philip.
So, I've worn multiple hats in my life. United States military taught me to communicate effectively, to be clear and concise, to prioritize. As I moved on to my career in law enforcement, communication only became more important. De-escalating situations, dealing with people in crisis was my bread and butter. I spent lots of time dealing with people with developmental disabilities, actively suicidal. That was how I made my living. So, moving forward as a barber, talking to people on their best day is my new favorite hobby because I used to spend a lot of time talking to people on their worst days. Communication is everything. I think I facilitate a lot of good communications in the questions I ask during our meetings and our executive sessions. I feel like being able to not necessarily speak on behalf of what I feel and what I want, but what I think people are going to be concerned about, that's where my strengths lie.
Going down to the other end of the table, Stephen Boswell, a chance for you to kind of brag about your qualifications and what would distinguish you from the other gentleman up here running for office.
Well, I own a small business in, and throughout that small business, I have learned to listen to the people that I'm dealing with. It's a mechanical business, so a lot of times, there's a lot of distrust in that business. So, learning to listen to the people that are having the issues and solving those problems for them in the best way possible has allowed me to kind of carve out a unique ability to listen to what the people need and what they really want and to try to problem-solve for them. Also, I have a major passion for the city as I have lived here for 10 years and I have always wanted to see it continue to grow and be healthy.
Microphone over to Ivan Delgado, that same question, what are your qualifications for the job and what distinguishes you from the other people running?
Well, one thing that I'm really good at is I'm good at listening to people. I'm very patient. I, you know, my time being in the Army, my time as a police officer, and my time now as a manager in my current occupation, I can listen to people. I can, and I don't just listen to you, I hear what you have to say and I take it to heart and I try to do the best thing that I can for you to accommodate you and hopefully we're able to come to a compromise. So, I think that's one of my strengths that I might have over everybody up here. And also, I have a lot of community involvement within our city. I try to do a lot of different things, participate in softball with the rec commission, you know, helping out wherever I can. So, I think that's what I got.
Brian Peel, what are your qualifications and what distinguishes you from the other people running?
I think my best qualification is a working background with municipalities and similar organizations as an employee or a staff member. It gives me a viewpoint that can relate to other municipal staff members and I think that's a hard thing sometimes for elected officials to be able to see. So, I think that is one of my biggest strong points. I've had 15 years of administrative-level decision-making and strategy in that area. I spend a lot of time at community events. I mentioned those before. I actually came here from a JV soccer game, so those are vitally important to be in attendance of. So, that's what I think sets me apart.
And wrapping us up, Rodolfo Arivalo, what qualifications do you have and what distinguishes you from the other gentleman up here?
I'd make sense of things, but primarily, what I would say is that I've dealt with communities, community structures, cities, counties for 45 or so years. I would probably be the only council member that could spend significant amount of time since I'm retired in trying to improve the quality of life and managing, helping manage the city appropriately. I have served on commissions, I've served on statewide commissions. The Bill Graves, Governor of the State of Kansas several years ago, appointed me to help him run his Blue Ribbon Committee on Improving Public Health in the State of Kansas. So, I know legislators, I know how to work with legislators, and I know the county government. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank them for their participation. I give them a round of applause for Spring Hill City Council candidates. And again, just to reiterate, the men sitting up here are representing two separate races that you will see on your ballot. There is a five-person race for two at-large seats that will serve a four-year term, so the top two vote-getters in that race will be, will win seats. Those are the four gentlemen from the left to the right and then plus Michael Grant, sitting council member who's not here. And then, there's another race to fill out a term for the next two years and that is the two men to the right plus James Savage who's not here. So, and all told, three at-large seats up for grabs on your ballot. So, thank you so much for coming. Thanks so much for participating. We'll have the school board candidates come up just in a second to start that one by 8 o'clock. Thank you once again.